Okay, I'd like to call the order of the Planning, Zoning and Building Committee. Let the minute take the role.
Alderman Lazara.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Winger. Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Here.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Woods. Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
For being present, making, asking for a motion for approval of the minutes of the meeting, May 22nd, 2014.
Make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Reported recommendation clock tower schematic design alternatives, and we're going to turn that over to Ms. Henigan.
Thank you very much. This evening, we have with us Ed Euler and John Nelson, who will be presenting the clock tower design at our May meeting. The committee had given us some feedback on four different alternatives. They've taken that feedback and put it into one more finalized proposal. They'll be going through it in some more detail, and we'll be asking you if you have any additional feedback, and if you're ready for them to prepare a proposal for the cost for construction drawings. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ed.
Thank you, Jennifer. We're happy to be back once again. It's about two years ago, I think, we started the process of doing a vision plan for the central core of Wooddale, which included a lot of park development, but the intersection, it was decided, was the most important aspect to go forward first. So, we've been working with the consultant who's doing the intersection improvements, and we made comments, basically suggesting paving improvements and additional landscape, and I believe that's been all accepted by the state. So, the clock tower, we felt, was probably the most important aspect of the plan that we prepared, because it will be a major identity for Wooddale, letting you know that you're right at the heart of the city. So, with that, I'll turn it over to John, and we'll start talking about what we did.
I think, from the early study, we always indicated that there should be a signifier at that intersection to create a sense of place. It, there's an enormous amount of traffic that goes through that intersection every day, as well as the railroad, the train, so it's a good spot to really let people know that Wooddale is here. And, next, the next one. So, this is just an introductory page, but I think on what we've integrated with this since the early schemes that we did, was the sense of an LED sign, a piece of signage that would be up at the top. We can go to the next one. And, again, this is just the same thing I just said. The intersection is really important, and it does have a tremendous amount of traffic. And we did, there is a traffic report that the traffic engineers prepared, and I don't really remember the number of vehicles now, but it's, it's a huge number. We also got some help from the LED people, who have information on all of these kind of things, because they're basically often selling advertising on signs. So, their statistics for this particular corner show, no, I'm not very organized here today. How many rides? Thirty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty-four are car, truck and van in this report. So, that's a lot of people. We, in some earlier schemes, we had oriented it on a diagonal, but actually, the recommendations came in to keep it on the orthogonal, or square with the streets. It has a greater visibility to more people than, the specialist told us that. And, really, then, I think if we just look, you saw the four schemes, but this is how it would look coming down Wooddale Road, and this is how it would look when you are at the intersection. And, here's the traffic report. Yeah, thirty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty cars, thirty thousand of them are driving alone, four thousand are carpooling, one thousand, two hundred and fifty, and eighteen motorcycles. I don't know how they figured that out, but anyway. So, with that location, you would have, the way the signage people figure it out, you create forty, four million, six hundred thousand impressions a day. Now, I don't know exactly what that means, but, a year, I mean. But that is the visibility that your sign, signage would have. And, the real purpose that why we put this tower there, was not for advertising, it was for identity of Wooddale. And, as the notion of LED came in, it would be so that you could feature your events, things that you're having, such as Prairie Fest, or the movies. But, it then occurred to us, because in Chicago, the mayor is putting up signs that he's renting out, you would have the ability, if you choose, to rent the LED sign out to users for advertising, which would help fund or pay for itself. Now, that's your choice. You don't have to do that. That was not our original idea.
Forget this question.
Yeah. On that subject, that you're talking about, the advertising, do you have any idea of what someone is paying on a sign like that? Yeah. Basically, there are all different ways these things are set up. And, this, again, is from the consultant, Mr., is it Frank Gillespie? Is one thousand five hundred to three thousand dollars per advertiser, and using consecutive numbers, you would generate about forty-eight thousand a year. The way they worked that out. And that would be-
Can I have a copy of that?
Pardon me?
Can I have a copy of that?
Frank, I think that we got-
It may be in there, yeah. All right, maybe I shouldn't let you get to it.
Last page.
Yeah, the last page.
Okay.
Now, if we went on into further development of the tower, into the, we would have much more detailed research on this. But this is a person who sells and manages these kind of electronics. We also did talk with another firm, and they gave us a higher estimate, both of the cost of the sign and of the revenues. So, at this point, since it wasn't really a signage study yet, we just wanted to have general ballpark numbers of what this would be. But, if it was forty-eight thousand dollars in revenue, it would almost pay for the cost of the sign the first year, where the sign would be between fifty and sixty thousand dollars as a part of the overall budget. So, now, maybe that's assuming you're going to run it so many hours a day, you may want to set your own policies and standards, and because you want to use it for your own marketing as well, you wouldn't have advertising all the time, I don't think. But, that would be for the city to determine what they felt was appropriate. Also, as, you probably all have seen some signs that are very garish and bright, and actually are disturbing. They can be kind of blinding at night if they're turned up too high. So, you'd want to specify, you know, we, you can control all of that. It doesn't have to be one of those flashy things that, you know, pops people's eyes out. So, that can be worked on, if you decide to go ahead with that.
The lumen output of LEDs is very controllable. You can have it, it would be brighter in the day, but you don't need it as bright at night. You could also control it right from City Hall, too.
So, this is just giving the dimensions, and it's about forty-one feet high, or forty-two feet high, by twelve feet wide, and the sign is about five by ten. When we talked to one person, of course, they were interested in signage, so they said, "Oh, you have to have it much bigger." But, it shouldn't look like a sign. It should still look like a tower with a sign on it, not like a sign that happens to be a part of a tower, because you'd still want it to be kind of dignified and represent the Prairie School style and the character of the town that we're trying to go after. And there, we just showed some possible ways that we put Goonies, your movie, that you're having in a couple nights, and a few of the other features. I think there's another one, Awareness Month. There's perhaps, you would rent it out, to, if the rib joint wanted to have a sweet baby-
Raise.
Raise. And then, the Fourth of July Fest, you might just have a fireworks display. And, you could have seasonal, seasonal colors also, highlighting the glazing part in the center. So, it may be orange at Halloween time, and, you know, red, white and blue at the Fourth of July, et cetera.
Yeah, it could be animated, too. So, the graphics could travel around the sign, the fireworks could be animated, too, so they, you know, so it's a lively, a lively issue.
And I think that is basically the development that we reached with this sign. As we said, the revenues are estimates at this point, but we can detail those further. The final construction estimate that we have at this point is between five hundred and fifty and six hundred and fifty, sixty thousand dollars. We haven't done a detailed estimate, because the guy, the estimator, only has these rough drawings. He doesn't really have, he can't take off quantities.
Okay, if you're done, I'd like to open up the questions. Alderman Wesley.
So, the numbers that you're giving us are rough, so are we looking for directions to go forward, where you could get the final price? And then I have a follow-up question, if you don't mind.
The next phase for us would be preparing design development and construction documents.
Okay.
And, once we get through design development, we'll have enough to get, really, a very finite estimate. But, of course, it's always competitive, too, so we ensure we want to get a minimum of three bids to build this, and, so, you know, it's competitive world now, so we could actually wind up with a smaller number than we estimated.
Go ahead.
I just have a couple, in the, can we go back to the slide?
Yeah.
The second page of vision of it? Second page of the flyer? And maybe someone could refresh my memory here. That intersection is going to be done like that?
No, it's going to have the brick pavers in it, but it will not have the patterning that we originally proposed, zigzagging through the street, at least not at this point. The engineers didn't-
The state's not buying that.
The state wasn't willing to pop for that.
I'm just wondering, did we get the final design of that intersection, the study, the way it's going to look? Because I don't remember seeing it. And is the state and county on board with that intersection like that?
They are with the paving, walkways, yes.
They're walkway only, but what about the street?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, it's in the drawing. I just want to verify today.
Come here, please.
I think you're talking about the safety improvements, correct?
Right.
I think, if I looked at the drawing correctly, there is the extra turn lane there, is in there already. Is that correct, Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Yeah, it's in there. And, I believe you said you talked, spoke to IDOT about the location, so it's far enough away where you don't have to have breakaway and all that other stuff?
They've agreed with all our comments, and we gave them a planting list and a planning diagram, too, for some of the median plantings and the edge plantings, and they've accepted that.
They accepted the revised one. We couldn't have everything we wanted. We wanted to have a few more trees closer to the intersection, and they wouldn't accept that. They had to be out back further.
So, everything's, everything's been approved, and I know you guys have been working with HR Green and the whole concept.
Do we have Alderman Lazara?
Thank you. I love it. I mean, I think that if I had the five hundred thousand, I probably would say, "Let's, let's go ahead and do it." I guess the question would be, do we have the money for this?
Jeff?
Yeah, we've got this programmed in, into the CIP already. It's passed, it's passed, uh, winter, so it is programmed in, and it is within the budget in the moment.
And it's for how much?
I think we programmed in seven hundred and fifty.
Seven hundred and fifty thousand, just for the, and one more question, Pete.
Go ahead.
Sorry. Now, maybe this sounds like a crazy question, but could we put Wooddale on top, instead of on the bottom? So, when you pass by in a train, you see it, because, you know, I don't know, does it, do they see that in the train there?
Well, you certainly could have Wooddale on the sign, all the time, actually. With your logo.
What?
One question here. It does look like the Wooddale is on concrete in front of the sign?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
At the bottom. But, you could, you could put it on the top, as a border along the top of that thing, or, and it could also be on the graphic itself. So, I think, as Ed said, the next step is development, which would be adding some refinements. So, we could take a look at-
Right, yeah, if you can, maybe, and see what that looks like.
Impact it, yeah.
Alderman Catalano?
If we go back a few slides, where you line up all the clock towers?
That one or a different?
Where all the clock towers are all lined up.
Oh, okay.
Can we make the hands on the clock a little bit bigger? I mean, it's, they're kind of hard to see from a distance.
Oh, sure.
Yes.
Yeah.
We actually could probably wipe the hands on the clock. And wipe the numbers, too, at night.
Chaps?
Yeah, I actually had a quick question, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
The vertical LED lights, are those just light bars, or could you, if you wanted to put like a Wooddale and Prairie-style font, once in a while, if you wanted to, in vertical text, or is that just a light panel?
Those are just light bars at this point, but, you know, if you have seven hundred and fifty, we can add some more LEDs.
Mayor Police?
Before you spend all the money, we still have to put all the trees and the medians and everything else.
Yeah.
But, like you said, we can use the LED signage, could say, "Welcome to Wooddale," certain times of the day, like when we know the trains are coming through, we can put that up there.
You could time it to the train, sure.
My question is, it's five-foot signage, and the clock is almost five-foot also. I mean, that's big enough to be seen.
Without-
Right.
-being overpowering.
Right.
You know, we didn't want it to be out of scale with what else is around there. I mean, it's meant to be within the scale. We went on the concept of the train station as the model of the design style, and attempting to probably use a similar color brick, so you start to develop an identity of place. And, I think a five by ten, from that distance, will be very legible. I kind of went around and looked at, you know, the old-fashioned way, empirical evidence, and I, there's several signs in the city that I would go a block away, and there's a three-foot-high sign, and I would see if I could read it from a block away, or two blocks away, but I don't know that you want to read this from any further than two blocks away, or it's, it's too big.
You know, we could certainly do a quick mock-up of the correct size of this, of the clock face itself with numbers, and just, you know, take a look at it. Everyone can take a look at it, see if they can read it.
Continue.
I mean, whatever we put up to, like Prairie Fest, it doesn't have to flash ten seconds or five seconds, we can keep it up there for a minute, so people have time, as they stop at the lights and whatnot, to read it.
The program, program, program ability of the LEDs is very flexible, so you can, you know, put anything up for any amount of time and make it really interesting and exciting.
Yeah, no, I really like the flag and the fireworks. I mean, it's beautiful.
Alderman Winger, you had a question?
Thank you. So, along those lines, I do have a concern about the clock face, that we have a bad habit in Wooddale of ordering these clocks that are too small, the clock faces. So, were you saying you would do a mock-up of the clock face itself?
Yes.
And then we could see how legible it is?
Yes.
And how would we test that out, though, with, up higher?
Did you have a cherry picker somewhere?
Yeah, yeah.
We could, we could make one and bring it up in the air at that height, and then you could decide if it needs to be increased or modified slightly.
Or we can all decide.
Yeah.
Mrs. Henigan, I think, did you have a comment?
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to clarify the direction that we're looking for tonight, was that once the committee's comfortable with the concept as it is, we would then have Euler prepare a proposal for their construction drawings, and that proposal, would they come back to PCB for consideration, again, for that?
So, then, at that point, we'll have already had our demonstration, maybe in the parking lot with a cherry picker?
Well-
Like, we could approve this tonight, but then, before we say go, I want to know what we want.
Yeah, the next step is called design development. That's taking this and going through each of these questions, before we actually, we don't immediately do the construction drawings. We develop the design, just as you've made some suggestions of size of the clock, maybe having a Wooddale on the top. So, we would do all of that and make the mock-ups during that design development phase. And then, once we've appro, we have approval on all the details, turn them into construction drawings and get bids.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Lazara had another question?
What's the longevity of this tower, or this clock? I mean, how many years are they saying you get out of this?
I'd say about ten years for an LED sign, and, you know, the technology advances so quickly, you know, you can be out of date very, very quickly, but this kind of sign is not that, you know, terribly sophisticated, that it's not going to last, at least for ten years. And LEDs, you know, depending on how much you run them, though, they'll last quite a while. And they're actually quite energy efficient, too. They don't use a lot of electricity.
Okay.
I mean, the tower would last for forty or fifty or sixty years.
Right.
And, the clock, which would last a long time, too, but the LED sign, because of the const, that's a technology thing. And just like laptops and everything else, after so many years, there's something better and cheaper.
And then, it's hard to say, but at today's dollars, to replace just that clock, you said was fifty grand?
For the LED.
Yeah.
I think, I don't know if we had fifty in it for the clock, or-
I mean, but ten years, you know, I shouldn't, that's not a fair question, because obviously we don't know how much anything's going to be in ten years. But today's dollars, was that fifty grand?
Well, that, the LED, if you choose to sell advertising on it, will pay for itself. So, actually, you will accrue money to replace it when you need to.
Right, right, but I'm just kind of getting a feeling of what maybe that might be. Is there anyone using this setup right now, that you know of?
There's a lot of LEDs all over, all over the highways and all over Chicago, there's-
Can you, can you give us a particular area for us?
Sure, we can take some photographs of some.
And even let us know where it's at?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
What you do is look at the Rosemont, Chicago outlets, they've got the big one on the side of 294 there, it's bright. And not only that, I wouldn't delve too much into this clock, it's five-foot tall, and it's only going to be thirty-four feet up in the air. It's, if you can't see that, and we're not trying to let everybody look at it, either, to create an accident in the intersection, so if we can just give direction on what we were looking for right now, that'd be great.
Mayor Police, you had a question?
Yeah, that clock, is it pretty much the same as the one at the train station?
Similar.
That one's pretty good. You can see that one from far away, so.
Alderman E. Wesley, you have a question?
The estimated cost, is that counting installing the mechanism in the City Hall to control that?
Yes.
Okay, so I will make a motion to move forward with this.
Second.
In a second phase. I can't give a price of not to exceed, because we don't know.
Do we really need a motion on this, Mayor?
Yes.
Alderman, R. Wesley, you have a question first?
Yes. The next part for this that you're going to do, is that part of your contract?
No.
How much more is it going to be for you?
We have to figure that out and send it to you.
So, we're going to go on to the next phase here, not knowing how much their fees are?
Oh, you will.
You can make a contingent on our contract being acceptable.
Mr. Murvis?
We're not going on to anything until we come back to you again. We just wanted to get some feedback on the clock. You like the direction we're moving, and these gentlemen will put together their net scope, and then we'll come back to you, and you would approve something then. So, tonight, we're just moving forward with the process, not expending the dollars.
Okay.
Okay. If we don't have any more questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? There are none that passes. Items to be considered for future meetings, CDC recommendation, 300 Bowman Court height variations, July 10th, 331 North Cor, Corner Sideyard setback, July 10th, 700 North Wooddale Road setback variation, July 10th. Do we have anything else? I can make a motion to adjourn the meeting? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Meeting adjourned.
I'd like to call Public Health Safety Judicial Committee to order, let's, to show that same people are still present. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from May 22nd, 2014.
Move.
All in favor?
You need a second?
Second.
Motion, did you second?
Right, I'm sorry, go ahead, yes.
Okay. Eugene, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I'll turn it over to Chief.
Thank you. Committee tonight, looking for approval to purchase office furniture for the police department, replacement of current desks in the amount not to exceed of sixteen thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars. Many of you have been on a tour to see the conditions of some of these desks, but the laminates coming off, many of them are held together with some odd pieces of wood, and some of them have been picked out of, picked out of storage in the past to make deals. So, these are going to be almost 25 years old, and we're seeking to replace about 23 total desks.
One moment. I'd like to make a motion to approve the furniture. Okay, any questions? All in, Nita Roka on this? Does he have a question, Frank?
No, I just seconded it.
You have a question there?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Chief Al, soon are you looking to do this?
With the approval and council approval next week, we'll order it next Friday.
Okay.
Any other questions? Roka, please.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Winger? Yes. Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Next.
Next is kind of a housekeeping issue. Back in 2006, the area of, east of Wooddale Road and north of Irving, had a, there was originally in a pilot program put in to prohibit parking on one side of the street over there due to the width of the streets. After a several-month pilot project, there was approval from the residents and good feedback that parking should be restricted to one side in that whole area of town. During those, whenever that was codified and put into language, there was two blocks of that whole area that were not included.
Excuse me?
And-
I'd like to make a motion to amend the ordinance, 15.2006.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Oh, questions? Alderman Lazara?
Thank you. Greg, how many homes does this actually affect?
There's about nine homes.
Do they know this is changing?
No, they don't yet, and the only reason that we didn't do a, like a normal- No, they don't yet. Uh, and the only reason that we didn't do a full, like a normal survey that we would on this is because when it was done back in two thousand and six, this area was supposed to be included. So this was more of a housekeeping issue as opposed to a new initiative. So that's why we didn't, uh, go out to every resident on that.
Okay, but I mean, do you think it would create a hardship? Are there people that are possibly using this and needing this as a?
In talking with the, uh, with, with the elected officials in the area, no one really uses that side of the street anyways, uh, from my understanding. I've been out there a few times and really haven't seen anyone parking there. Um, you know, if you want to, before final council action, we could certainly go visit those houses too. That, that would be fine. The only reason we didn't is because it wasn't a new program. It was kind of a housekeeping of a past program.
I guess I would feel better if you did.
You can do that.
Thanks.
Alderman Eugene Wesley? I believe this is just, we did no parking the whole entire ward, fourth ward, because the fourth ward is a narrow street. And it's unfortunate, I, this area is also one of the, Mike Sizmarski's block that he lives in. Uh, so this was, I don't know how this got left off the ordinance right off the top. So we already got no parking throughout the whole entire street, uh, ward. So, I mean, to waste the time of sending out letters, I mean, people know it now and, and you drive down that area, you know, it's just not. And we talked about it already, so. Okay. Alderman Jacobs?
I just wanted to make sure, uh, Alderman Sizmarski, there, there's no issues with us doing this. Okay, thanks.
Okay, oh, Alderman Winger?
And those two streets, do we have signage out now that says no parking on one side and it's literally just a paperwork issue on our end? Or, or are there no signs out either that say no parking?
There are no signs out there right now.
Okay.
It's just the fact that when I think, when Edgewood got redone, we had our whole street redone, curbs and street sidewalk put in. They never continued on with any of the signs up to Foster.
And, and if I could mention, I did pull the old memo from two thousand and six, the, uh, the map that was drawn. For some reason, those two were left off, so it never made it into the codification. But I remember the discussions internally as staff at that time, as it was supposed to be the whole ward, ward. I don't know how the two blocks got missed. Uh, it was brought to our attention a couple of months ago, so.
Just one more?
No, I'm, I'm not opposed to it. Um, I just think that we probably owe it, owe it to the residents to at least let them know. Um, it's like one of those things that, you know, you've had it for like how many years now? Since oh six, so it's like once, if you've never had it, then of course you, you wouldn't miss it. But I, I just think, you know, we said, yes, let's go through with this, but at least let them know.
So you want a letter sent out? That's fine?
But you wanted it in the back of the door or something?
Yeah, uh, how about, we'll make some notification and, uh, I forgot there's no meeting next week. So by the next council meeting, you'll have a confidence that we know, notified everyone, so that's fine.
Okay, that's your one. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Eighty-three in Sherwood. I have some legal questions on this. I need to check with the attorney and I'm going to make a motion to table that.
Second.
Second.
No. Committee, committee. Back to committee. So we got a first, second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
No, I, I do oppose.
Oppose?
Oppose.
Okay. Okay, one oppose. I'm not used to that. It's okay. Items for future meetings, anything? Nope. Okay, uh, motion, motion for a German?
A move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thanks you, thank you for your ten minutes, Chief.
Called order of Finance and Administration Committee, with the world taker, world taker take the attendance and all the, all the members that are present. Also need approval of minutes of May twenty-second, twenty fourteen.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Have a report recommendation for the amendments in chapter eight, article six of the city code amusement tax. Mr. Eugene Wesley?
I'm asking it, does we take, remove off the agenda, please?
Wait, wait, wait.
No reason.
You mean just kill it, right?
Yep.
Not take it off, just.
Kill it.
Never to be seen again?
Nope.
No, no tax, no new taxes?
Right.
Just what I mean.
Second.
It's not new taxes.
We don't have a tax now, do we?
Yep.
Amusement tax?
We have a code.
Is there amusement tax now?
Yes, yes, there is an amusement tax. Do you like to explain that, Mr. Brad?
What? Wait.
Mr. Chairman? I need a motion second, but there's questions.
Hasn't been raised since nineteen eighty-six, eighty-two, Brad?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the city does currently on the books, uh, from nineteen eighty-two, uh, have an amusement tax. Depending on which side of the camp you're on, unfortunately, nothing that's in the city code right now still exists in two thousand and fourteen. So we're not actually collecting any, any revenue on anything, um, that's codified that we're allowed to collect revenue. And there are things listed in the code, but, um, not allowed to collect revenue on any of those things. So it would be complete rework and a modernization of the code. But, uh, as there's a motion and a second on the table, but like I said, we do currently have amusement tax on the books. But, uh, nothing that, um, exists currently is subject to the tax.
Mr. Wilson, Governor Sir Murvis?
If we wanted to, if, if we're not interested in amending, maybe the direction could be to eliminate that from, from the code. To eliminate that section from the code. Because it's not applicable anymore.
Yeah.
So I'll, I'll amend my motion if, if, you can amend my motion? I meant my motion to eliminate it. You just said that.
No.
Eliminate this.
Eliminate your.
Yes, that is my motion, eliminate. That will be my new motion on the floor. Because I'm not in favor of doing anything with this, so eliminate it. Let's go through your amendments here. What are your amendments? What is it now? And what are you adding?
It's, it's real simple. The, the, the old amusement tax had a bunch of outdated things that aren't in use anymore, like old school coin machines and things like that. What we're saying is you can either modify it and make it to today's standards and add things, or the recommendation would be just to just eliminate that section of the code. Which is, sounds like what you want to do.
Eliminate that section of the code?
So there'd be nothing, no amusement tax on anything.
I want to go through the questions. Let's, let's go through the questions.
That doesn't touch the video gaming. Right, okay. Right, I just.
I got a question for. What is, what is your theory of eliminating it, Alderman Wesley? My theory is i- i- if you keep this in the books, this could affect our downtown area down the line regardless. Plus the Thorndale corridor that's coming on board, okay, we, we had that tax, we had the TIF district, we had all this. It, it's really going to affect us down the line. That business is going to say, am I coming here because of all this, we adding some of the tax on it? So that's the reason. That, can I go on? There is no new tax. There is no more money extra on this, correct?
As the code is written right now, uh, correct.
Would it affect any businesses in existence now?
They haven't done anything since eighty-two.
No.
We aren't collecting money now.
Correct.
So why, why have it on, if we aren't collecting on it now, why have it on the books eliminated? We, we haven't collected since nineteen eighty-two.
No, usually you put a sticker on the machine.
Put a sticker on the machine and that's about it. Well, we get twenty-five dollars for that, don't we?
That's for the, for the video gaming machines, that's a completely different, that's mandated by the state and regulated by the state. This is a local ordinance.
But also pinball machines or video games, we used to collect for those. We don't collect anymore? You haven't collected for them?
No.
Why?
I don't.
Why?
Well, a couple of reasons. Um, one, um, by and large, it's a self-reporting mechanism. And I personally, admittedly, I haven't gone into every business in town, but I'm not aware of any pinball machines in town, if there are any. And it would be self-reporting and it would be, uh, included as a function of the business license process to license them. At the same time, they license their vending machines, um, and their business license.
Because it is on their business license for vending machines?
Vending machines, correct.
And I think it was a.
It would be under, be under the downloading of music video, instead of jukeboxes, they have the downloading thing, apparatus on a Wally program. That's an amusement, pool tables, video games, golden tee games. None of those are being reported, so that's why we're deciding to just get rid of it.
Yeah, none of those are specifically listed in the code. Pinball machines are the only ones specifically listed in the code. Like shuffleboard, uh, ski ball, if you look into it, and, uh, some very obsolete laser, laser induced video games. I'm not even really sure what those are, to be honest with you. Laser light emitting. Amusements.
I don't understand why you weren't collecting. I mean, I used to play the video games and see the sticker, so. Anyways. Yeah. Okay, since you're not collecting, I don't know why. I'm going to second his motion.
Peter?
I just have one quick question. Uh, how did this come up? I mean, was somebody asking about this? Because we have, we haven't collected in fourteen years. I mean, how did this come up for tonight?
Sure, um, it has come up a few times over the last, uh, year to two years. Um, it was also listed in the strategic plan as an item that the council, uh, wanted us to look into. And also, um, the city's initiative to go through its code book over the next year or so. Um, so it kind of fit into all three of those, uh, slots. Um, and then also seeing how obsolete it was, it would take pretty significant overhaul to get it timed up with the business license process. So we felt that bringing it forward now would give us time should the council want to overhaul it, to complete it by the time the business license renewal process went out. And, uh, marry everything up.
Plus there would be a tax on top golf per game, correct?
If it were structured that way.
And we were looking forward to downtown a lot while back when we were looking at strategic planning towards the new Thorndale, Thorndale corridor. That's why we brought it up. It was about three years ago. You take, you roll call? You want to, you want a report recommendation to, to alleviate the amusement tax?
It's a motion on the floor, right? Right, and the second.
Start changing it. Is he going to roll call vote?
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
A report recommendation for a TIF eligibility reconnaissance study. Take that, Mr. Wilson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, I'm going to turn that over to, uh, the accommodation of Ms. Henigan. And I apologize for the failure of the last name, but Jeff from.
Jeff, second.
Okay.
And, uh, my colleague, Parisa Ford, is going to join me up here as well. Uh, we're glad to be back, uh, speaking to you again. Um, I, I apologize, I don't remember how many of you were part of the, the Thorndale corridor planning process. But, uh, Steve Friedman and Rodney Beaus from our firm, both of them are out of town today. They would, they would like to have been here and had a chance to talk to you.
Jeff, would you mind going to the podium?
Sure, no, I don't know. Um, so, yeah, we're glad to be here, glad to be back. Uh, Stephen Ronady, who, who worked with you previously on the planning process, uh, weren't able to be here, but Parisa and I are glad to sort of catch you up. Um, the Thorndale corridor TIF study area was one of the recommendations coming out of that planning process. Uh, we did a, a fair bit of analysis on your behalf about the financial feasibility of portions of that plan and recommended that this tool be considered, um, to make the, the, the plan possible essentially. Certainly, certainly to expedite the implementation timing, uh, for the plan. Um, so what we've done over the last, uh, few weeks is to conduct the research necessary to determine whether the study area could be designated for a TIF. We, we haven't obviously written a TIF plan, so what we've come tonight with is our, sort of our preliminary findings. I want to share those with you and sort of let you know where we are. And I'm going to ask my colleague, Parisa Ford, to walk through the specific details of the findings, but that's sort of the purpose of, of the presentation this evening.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so what's displayed right now is the Thorndale plan on the top. And then below it is a very similar area that we used for our study area, um, in looking at the eligibility for TIF designation. The area includes about six hundred and three acres and close to two hundred and fifty parcels. Most of the area is improved. Uh, the vacant land is mostly a long Thorndale corridor, it's right of way. And then there's, um, also just a few, uh, random vacant lots throughout the area. But on whole, uh, most of the area includes vertical buildings, so we've looked at this from an improved land perspective. Um, and just for orientation, the major intersections here are Wooddale Road and Thorndale. And, uh, the study area is roughly centered at, uh, the intersection of Central Avenue and Sivert Drive. And here's the study area boundary, a little bit larger. So our process for the TIF designation study was basically to define this area, um, and then to do parcel by parcel field work. We looked at all of the properties in person, um, evaluated them against the criteria in the TIF Act and documented the factors that we saw. We also looked at a number of different sources provided by the city, um, for additional data. We looked at, um, the assessments in the area and, uh, basically compared these all to the requirements in the TIF Act. Under the TIF Act, there's basically two ways that you can qualify. Um, we looked at the improved requirements, like I stated before. There's blighted area type of designation or conservation area. And we ruled out the conservation area pretty quickly due to the age of buildings. They have to be fifty percent, need to be at least thirty-five years of age or older. And this area, interestingly enough, just, uh, just fails that test by a couple of years. Most of the buildings were, uh, in the eighties. So, uh, we don't qualify as a conservation area, but we do qualify as a blighted area. And the basis for that is the presence of five or more of thirteen eligibility factors listed by the act. Our study found that there were seven factors and those are listed below. They include lack of growth in EAV and that has to do with property assessments in the area. They were declining for the past five out of five periods, so it was a pretty strong trend. Deterioration, this was observed during field work on about fifty percent of the area, again, a strong factor. And then the others include excessive land coverage, excessive vacancy, obsolescence, presence of structures below minimum code and inadequate utilities. Um, excessive land coverage, this is due to a lot of small buildings in the area and small lots. So, uh, we have buildings packed in, we don't have adequate loading and service provisions compared to modern industrial development standards and layout. Excessive vacancy, uh, we observed a lot of available spaces during field work. Plus, we compared the vacancy trends in the study area and the larger, uh, submarket, the North DuPage submarket uh, in which the study area is located, of industrial and flex building occupancy. And we found that the study area had higher vacancy than the larger submarket for the past eight years. So again, this was a strong trend. Obsolescence, again, has to do with the age of the buildings and their layout. Um, the presence of structures below minimum code and inadequate utilities is related to the storm water management that's currently in the area. And, uh, lack of capacity of the current storm sewer system. And here's a map, it's a little bit difficult to see, uh, some of these factors, how they lay out on a parcel by parcel basis. And then, uh, area-wide factors were the last four that I had mentioned. But I guess what this map is good at illustrating is how crowded the area is. You can see. You can see all of those brown and gray areas are where the buildings are compared to the lots, and it's pretty crowded in that, uh, south, southeastern portion there. In addition to the eligibility factors, there's a couple of other, uh, required tests and findings under the Act. And those include lack of growth and private investment, um, what's commonly referred to as the BUT-4 test. And then, uh, consistency with the city's comprehensive plan in regards to the land uses that we're proposing, and contiguous parcels, which basically means that only the area that's included within our boundary is expected to benefit from TIF designation. So our analysis found that the study area is going to qualify under each of these tests as well. And for the conclusions and next steps, uh, Jeff, I don't know if you want to cover this?
Sure, um, yeah, we just, we... It, it is quite simple, I guess. We did want to just let you know that we do have eligibility here. Um, we could refine the boundary, uh, if we, if you so chose, you know, that, that, obviously, we haven't gotten to that point yet, but if, um, you all want us to move forward, the next steps would be to construct the redevelopment plan. Um, and then we can help walk through the process for designation. Again, there's still a lot of steps to the process where you get another look at this and make sure it's doing what you want it to do, but we essentially just want to get your, get you up to speed on where we are in terms of research and then get, uh, the chance to go forward. That's it for tonight. Uh, questions, sir?
Mr. Wilson?
I have a couple of questions. So the land that we talked about qualifies for TIF district. Now, do we have to commit to how many years we're looking to TIF this thing now? And then the other thing is... And I'm not an expert on TIF stuff, so bear with me here. And then my other concern is about all the ta, other taxing bodies that are involved in tifting, cause that's a big area for TIF. I mean, that's a huge area to TIF. I'm in favor of tipping it, but I'm also in favor of trying work at that, the other taxing bodies, like the school, the fire district, the park district. Don't lose a lot of money if we TIF this whole area. Cause basically, their income is basically industrial and very, you know, at least for the fire district that. So I don't want all the, any other taxing bodies get, get hammered because we TIF this whole area to bring retail in. So is there a way that, I don't know if that's where we try and line this up now or discuss this? Or do we do this on the next phase? To give you the green light to go ahead with the second phase?
Well, we can talk about it right now, conceptually, I'm happy to do that. Uh, duration of the district is statutory, so if you, if you make a TIF, it's twenty-three years. You have the authority to close it out early if it's, if it fulfills the goals that, that the city has determined, so... But, but there's no way to set it at a different duration, so...
With, with a penalty or no penalty?
No penalty, as, as long as, you can close it at any time, as long as you don't have obligations, financial obligations attached to it.
So what you're saying now is we have to lock in for twenty-three years on a TIF? And not, we can't say we're going to only TIF this for ten years or five years?
You can't say that on the first day, but if you collectively, as a matter of policy, say, this is a ten-year TIF in our mind, you, so you can certainly set a signal that you intend to close it out in ten years. Um, but you can, I don't think, you know, the law, the law prescribes how long it has to be, and so it would take a future action by a future council unless, of course, you're still here to actually undo it.
Right, okay.
Right.
Mayor.
And on the, oh, and the second question on, on sort of the impact on the other taxing bodies.
Right.
Uh, the way it works is the values of those buildings today, the taxes from those would continue to flow to all the taxing bodies. So i-if hypothetically, let's say for now, the value is a hundred dollars of all the property. If miraculously, again, this is very complicated, but everything gets demolished next year after we create a TIF or you create a TIF, and everything goes down to ten dollars. Well, that, then in that case, there would be a, a negative impact on the, on the other taxing bodies. To go from a hundred base value to ten through widespread demolition and people holding it vacant. Um, but presumably, what would happen is it would get torn down and reconstructed, and it would reconstruct above the value of the base. And so the base, you know, would go from ten or one hundred briefly to ten and then up to two hundred theoretically. And that first hundred dollars would still, taxes on that base value still flows to all the taxing bodies as they get now. And the, the argument is, if you don't do anything, if you don't do anything with a TIF here, that's all they're ever gonna really get. We know, the, the analysis shows that the values are actually declining. And so the tax base is protected essentially, and only because you're intervening and creating development that never would have happened anyhow, that's, those are the taxes that would be captured in the TIF, in the TIF fund.
So I think, so then what you're saying is if they tear, I'm sorry. If they tear down the building, the value drops, and when they build the building back up, their money will be, their TIF, I mean, their money will get more, those districts will get more money than what it was at that time.
The districts won't get more, they'll get what they had today. So i-if, if it goes from a hundred down to ten briefly for demolition and then back to a hundred and ten, the taxes on the first hundred dollars of value will continue to flow to all the taxing bodies as they do right now.
Okay.
The ten dollars, that incremental growth is the only money that flows into the TIF fund to help fund redevelopment. So they're, they're, they're protected, they have essentially a, you know, a protection. Obviously, there's no downside protection, but nobody has that. If values go down, everybody has to deal with that. Um, but they're protected if there's growth above the floor, um, they, they keep the floor or the base value.
Okay.
Mayor?
Real simple, if we take, uh, over by where leaders used to be in the truck lot, you got a, a building and you got the empty lot. Let's say they're collecting twenty thousand dollars. Courtyard wants to put up a brand-new hotel, taxes are now half a million dollars. Taxing bodies are still gonna get the twenty thousand dollars. The extra money that gets split up for all the infrastructure, and if you guys remember the numbers that were given for the stormwater and the water mains and everything in that area that would pay for it. Now, if you have extra money, then naturally, you don't have to go full twenty-three years. If we pay it off in fifteen, we could stop it. I think Naperville's doing one, it was in the paper the other day, they're trying to add years to theirs. It was in the paper a couple of days ago. But if you do it right, you know, depending what the values are, you can end it quick.
Right, and you could theoretically also, um, at the end of any year, declare, declare a surplus. That's again, within the authority of the city. So you say, oh, you know, we, we projected we'd have a hundred thousand dollars of incremental taxes, we had a hundred and twenty. Let's take that twenty and, and let it go to all the other taxing bodies pro rata. You know, it, it, so that's within your power. Uh, again, maybe you want to pay it off faster, maybe you don't, but you could also do that, yes, sir?
Follow up.
The other thing is, in this area, I think you guys have included, uh, the libraries included, the fire departments included, the park district, the school district, so if all those taxing bodies need to do something to their buildings or whatnot, they could also, we could work it out, they could also take advantage of the TIF.
That's correct, capital projects, right, within the district, uh, for public bodies, so you could, and we've seen that done. Say, you gotta do a roof at the park district, we'll help you do the roof. Um, that's a way to, to, you can't just give money to a district for operating purposes, but you can fund capital projects, especially within the TIF district for other taxing bodies if you choose to.
Roy Wilson?
I hope the fire department doesn't do it, and I know all, all about them, so... Your, your theory of the, the growth, that's just if we don't hit a recession again.
Sure.
Because if you hit a recession, of course, it's gonna drop again. My question is to Brad, have you ta-talked to the school district, library district and all? Are they all in, are they all fine with this and...
Mr. Wilson?
At this point, uh, everyone that I've talked to, I don't know if, if "fine" is the right word, but they're not, not fine either. Um, since we still were waiting on the results of this, everyone was still in kind of a wait-and-see mode. Um, and so depending on the results of tonight, um, you know, per, uh, Alderman Eugene Wesley's concerns, I mean, that's when the significant outreach to the other taxing bodies is gonna begin. So they're all aware that we're, we're going down this path. And like I said, so there's been some, some general correspondence, and so after tonight, that's when the, the real communication's gonna go. Cause if, if you guys say no tonight, then, you know, we've riled everybody up for, for no real reason. If we say yes, then, then it becomes real and a thing, and there's the joint review board we have to work through and a number of other steps. So, um, that's when the outreach is, is, is gonna become...
Follow up.
A lot more intense.
Go ahead.
My que, uh, maybe it was answered when I was out of the room. But how soon can we make this a TIF district and how fast could it go? Thorndale's coming quick. I want to be in, ahead of Benza, Vi, Tesca and everything else.
Sure, uh, normally, you know, it takes us, whatever, let's call it six weeks to get a, a report finished from this point. Um, and then there's three to four months of noticing period according to state law. So we would be done before the end of the year, um, but it, it, it would be, you know, down, down the stream a bit. It would be probably three to five months out, depending on how quickly, I mean, it can't be three, it's gotta be four to six really, months out to get it done. The state law just takes a while to do all the meetings and notices and all the things you have to do. But end of the year is, is, I think, a realistic goal. And, and we can work on it harder if we can, if we need to, and try to squeeze everything and time into your schedules and all that, but there's often meeting challenges and organizational challenges that make that not perfectly efficient.
I'll make a motion to move forward on this.
I'll second.
Still have a question, Peter Druck?
A couple of quick questions. Um, number one, I know this butts up to unincorporated Wooddale, doesn't it? To some unincorporated houses over there? Could that throw anything into the mix or affect us at all? I mean, I don't want to move forward and then, because they, they have a problem with it, then we have to...
County.
We will notice them, that will be part of the statutorily required noticing, uh, seven hundred and fifty feet from the boundary. So they'll get a letter, but, uh, uh, you know, everybody gets a letter who's within seven hundred and fifty feet of the boundary, but they're in the city or out.
Okay, but the county can't say you can't...
The county is a member of the joint review board, and so they could, um, vote no. And, and that, if, if the ju, joint review board as a majority votes in opposition, you'd have to have a supermajority of city council to approve it. But nobody can stop a council, a city who wants to do this, really. It's, you know, they, they can make it a little harder.
One other question for, for Mr. Wilson, uh, what is the cost of this next step?
It's all in, it's all in our contract. Uh, I, I apologize, I don't mean to step in. I, uh, uh, it's, I think we've got about eight thousand dollars of, of work to finish it up from here, I believe. I think we've got about twelve to get to here, to, twenty total, um, but that's, you've already proved that, to be straight about it.
Thank you.
Chen, did you have a question? No. Eugene, you got something, or Mayor, I'm sorry, you got something?
I just wanted to make one other comment. In regards to all the other taxing bodies, the six hundred acres, if that's worth a hundred million dollars right now, once it starts getting redeveloped, if it doubles to two hundred million dollars, all the taxing bodies are gonna enjoy a increase in revenue.
Eugene?
I, going, I'm in favor of moving forward with this right now, but I would ask that our staff or, or your company at least have a meeting with the other taxing bodies and explain this to them. Cause I'll tell you one thing, when I first got on this board, I was totally against TIF districts. After hearing about another town over, I, I, I was totally against it. I just want to make sure, we try and work together with all the taxing bodies in our community now. We're making headways and try and get, I, I, I just want to make sure they are perfectly clear with this doing. And I don't care if you have a special meeting, Jeff, or our staff, to explain it to them. I, I just want to make sure all the taxing bodies are, cause I don't want, I don't want that taxing bodies against, and all of a sudden I got flyers going out and says, this person's against this and we packed this diast and, and protesting this. So I, I just want to make sure that we follow through with all the taxing bodies.
Peter?
In the memo, it talks about, uh, once the draft documents, it's gonna be reviewed by the city. Is that the city attorney or is that the city manager? Is that the c, city council or who with the city is gonna be reviewing it?
It's you.
Yes.
Usually, we submit a draft, it goes to staff, um, we get feedback, we refine the draft report, um, and then it comes before... I mean, attorneys have to look at it and make sure they're comfortable, uh, and then ultimately, obviously, you're, you are the final deciders. So everybody gets a bite of the apple, I guess, if you will, and you just get the last and the real, the real bite of the apple.
Could I just, staff, could you make sure we get a, uh, a copy of this PowerPoint?
We have copies here, actually.
Okay. I, I just want to make sure we get a copy in case we have some questions raised, so, that's it, thank you.
Any other questions? You got a motion in a second. You take roll, we don't need roll call, we do. It's no money value, it's already paid for. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Report, report recommendation for purchase of furniture for executive session in council chambers in an apt to exceed amount of fifteen thousand, one hundred and forty dollars. Here's my motion.
Second.
Frank? I'm good. So we need a roll call on this?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's money. May I take a, please take a roll call? Well, you have something? Hold on.
Did the motion or, uh, you made a motion, right?
Mm-hmm.
Not to exceed the amount?
Yep.
Okay.
Swinger?
So it looks, um, the, the chairs, the, the diast chairs, have we tested a sample out to make sure they clear the diast? And it looks like we're getting more of the same to me, and, and they're all chipping back here and they're peeling and... But they just don't hold up, and I believe we ordered from here before, like, the ten years ago when we did it.
Mr. Wilson? I mean, Mr. Murmas?
Yeah, we're trying, uh, we're gonna have them come out here first before we get the chair to make sure it's sized right. They have different models of this chair.
Okay.
So I don't think there'll be any chipping like we had before. And I think those chairs that we bought before were significantly lower model than these chairs. These will be more durable with the arms, they're a different material, I think, than what we have out there, so...
Okay.
The idea would be that these chairs last a little bit longer, look a little bit nicer.
Right.
More durable.
Okay, good, thank you.
Baby seat. Booster seat. So you need a roll call vote. Wait for Eugene?
Oh, whoa, I'm sorry. What are we here? Fine, okay. Isn't it on the list?
Roll call, please.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Items to be considered for future meetings, AF City Code Update, July twenty-fourth, P Water Code Update, August, and C Water Rates, September. Anything else to add? Mayor?
Uh, probably doesn't go here, but we had a, I received an email from Park Ridge City Council. They're looking to, uh, put a referendum question regarding O'Hare on the ballot. The manager's gonna talk to the attorney, if that's even possible, I, for November, from what I understand. For us, it's too late, I don't know, unless it's something different in Cook County. But, um... I can read this for you, if you guys, if you don't even want, this question will be now placed into ordinance for two readings. Park Ridge City Council, July meetings appears that Park Ridge will have a question on the ballot. I'm reaching to your municipality to see if you would consider placing a similar question on your ballot to show unity and support for mitigation measures to the areas impacted by O'Hare air traffic. This question was formulated as a response to a CIA Chicago referendum question regarding O'Hare that will appear in the Chicago ballot in November. Chicago's referendum question deals solely with whether the sound contour should be reconsidered so more soundproofing can be offered. While soundproofing is a good start, it does not consider the full environmental impacts and is an imperfect solution to the problem as it does not mitigate noise when windows are open and when attempting to enjoy your back, your backyard parks or other amenities under the flight path. It's just another thing coming up here. We can't really discuss it, it's not on the agenda, but...
What order, then?
Put, put it on the...
What order?
That's what I said, that's what I said.
Put it on the...
Just an information, that's all I'm telling you.
We're not talking about it.
Put it on our future meetings.
Okay.
Anything else?
I'd like to know our results from the, uh, survey, too. From O'Hare. From the other town, too.
Mr. Murmas?
You mean the, the, the number, the final quantity that we got?
Yeah, from the O'Hare thing, you know, that went in the Whatabill, the petition?
Yeah. So you don't want the surveys, you want the quantity filled out?
Right.
Okay, we'll put that on the packet.
And, and whatever, there was another town, too, that was involved with it, too.
No, actually, uh, I'll pay after the meeting.
Tell me after. Thank you.
You have a motion for adjournment?
I move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.